So for that sake, we do need another flag salute. Good evening, everyone. Please stand salute flag. I have a notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the Public Meeting Act according to the Book of laws nineteen seventy-five, chapter two-three-one. This agenda is completed to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and Tritonian newspapers, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the City Clerk's office, and posted on the city of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. We're all home. Councilman Evans?
Present.
Councilwoman Feliciano?
Present.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Harris?
Present.
President? Adam? Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
And Council President Frisman?
Present.
You?
You're welcome.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, present. And Mr. Weston Bridges, I understand, is in root, and Mr. Ecology is here, present. On your call, Madam President.
Let's proceed.
Certainly. Council President, I understand we have presentations scheduled for this evening, and...
Is that the invocation, Mr. Sebastian, please?
I'm sorry?
The invocation?
Certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Almighty God, who holds the faith of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater glory. Amen. Thank you. And Council President, I understand we have some presentations to see, correct?
That is correct.
And I believe the first on your, the first presentation will be Mr. Mallon.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, folks. Good evening. You've already reached our simple handover, just when you're introducing yourself, but I have to remind you, because I'm trying to, for all of you, to run through it quickly, um, you see the five, of course, uh, for your consideration, decide before. Thanks. Mr. Wolf.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. Robert S. Robert S. Goldsmith of Greenbaum Rose Michael Davis, L.L.P., and I represent twenty-eight, Trenton Twenty-Eight West State Street LLC. It's the beautiful Trenton Trust Building on State Street. My client acquired it some years ago. It is currently vacant, except for the PSENG facilities on the first floor in the mezzanine, and my client has put together a team that we, we're proudly involved in the redevelopment of the Camden and Common Cam Company Building in Passaic. It's the same team. The architect is Michael Nelson, Clark Caden Hens. The financial consultant is Jeffrey Otto of the Otto Group. The ownership is Concord Estates, and the young man who's the principal is Joseph Muller, who's a visionary and a pleasure to work with, and I am the attorney for the group. I would ask Mr. Nelson, who created the Passaic project, to give you a brief demonstration of the project that was transformational in Passaic, and we think that this project would be transformational as well. Note that this is the hundredth birthday. Twenty-twenty-four will be the hundredth birthday of that building. It's a magnificent building. The goal is to preserve the building, turn it into residential units, preserve the PSENG facility on the first floor in mezzanine, and we think, again, it would be transformational for the city of the downtown area and a real contribution to the community.
Thank you. While he's bringing that up, just for clarification, so your last name is Goldsmith, is that correct? Thank you, sir. Thank you.
It is. It's just one more here. There's just one more here.
We do have prints, we can hand those out, and maybe just...
Success.
Good evening. I introduce myself, I'm Michael Nelson. I'm an architect and associate partner with Clark Caden Hens. Our office is just up the road here in Trenton. We're a group of architects, planners, landscape architects. We have a longstanding history in the city of Trenton. I won't go into too much detail about our projects throughout the city, but recently we completed some work with Ms. Richardson for the recreation centers, for West Ward Recreation and for the North Clinton Recreation Center. I think those are two examples of, is my audio coming through okay? It sounds a little bit, a little bit, right? I think those are two examples of transformative projects. When we started with them, it was difficult to see how community youth could really engage with the buildings and, you know, find a place of refuge, a place of home at those buildings. And I think through some very simple architectural work with Ms. Richardson, her team, we really, I think, had some beautiful transformations there. West Ward Rec opened a few weeks back, and it was fantastic to see all the happy faces using the building. A few other examples in Trenton are the Robling Complex there. We, we've completed two, the first two phases of a multi-phase project, and again, this is transformation of buildings that's really exciting as an architect there, that the buildings were long dormant, and with the first two buildings complete, they're now vibrant homes for, for people, and Princeton Hydro is a tenant of one of the office buildings that we completed there. And this is a little more specific to the team that's here today to talk with you folks about. This is an overview of a project that we're currently working on in Passaic. This is, it's an old building, it's an old industrial building that was originally constructed in nineteen eleven. There were a series of additions over a period of time into the twenties. These are some pictures when we, when we started the project. You can see it's a bit of a rough-and-tumble industrial project. It was used largely for industrial tenants after, you know, the original occupants of the building left. And here's a last picture of a before image of what it looked like when we began, and this is the first phase of the project that was completed, just to show, again, this transformation of an old industrial building in this case that is now a vibrant grocery store market. That was the first phase of an ongoing project that includes retail, office space, banquet hall facility, or several parking garages. So it's really an astonishing project to be a part of, great to be a part of this team, and it's, again, just to give you a sense of some of the work that we've done together. So the project we're here to talk about today is Twenty-Eight West State Street. In part, this may be an introductory discussion, but it's, again, to see the relationship of our office to the building, we're just, just around the corner, so it's in our, you know, in our backyard, in our, in our neighborhood, it's, you know, it's an important part of our media community. The existing building is a beautiful, um, bazaar, neoclassical building that really had been used for office use throughout its history. It's currently occupied by PSENG on the first two floors, and the upper floors are largely, if not completely vacant, at this point. This is historically how the building functioned. It's a narrow building, a double-sided corridor with office space on each side, and really the floor plate lends itself quite nicely to the intended transformation. So this is a typical floor plate showing residential occupancy throughout the building. So I think this, again, it's really just an introduction. I don't know if we have, you know, any direct things beyond to, to show you some of the work we've done together, to show you the work that we're planning for Twenty-Eight West State Street, and just open it up to any questions that you folks may have that we can answer today.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Does anyone have any questions? So what I do want to ask is, will that Councilwoman Evans?
Good evening. My only question I want to ask is parking. Is there any parking with this building, and if so, how many parking spaces are going to be available for the residents? And also, how many units are you expecting to create versus those parking spaces as well?
Sure. As it relates to parking, the owner is in active discussions with the parking structure that's directly adjacent to the building. So the intention there is to reach an agreement with that owner to provide sufficient parking for the, for the apartment uses. As far as the apartment counts, it's eighty-four apartments total are planned for the building.
Councilwoman. I shouldn't have let you go before we took off. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you. What is the split between, it seems it's only one bedrooms and two bedrooms?
It's, it's one bedroom and two bedrooms. Sorry, I can see my mouth is short here, so I can't breathe it. Okay, I think it changed slightly from when this slide was made, but fifty-eight one-bedroom units, twenty-six two-bedroom units is the display.
Thank you. I may have missed it. What's going to be roughly the square footage of the one bedroom and then the two bedroom?
It's, they, they all vary.
Oh, I just see the square footage for the grocery store, click four, oh, okay, to the right, seven ninety and ten eighty, sorry, I missed that.
No worries. And they vary. It's just by nature of the floor plate, that's an average of where each unit, you know, type is.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we have, we have copies on the table in the back there.
Councilwoman Figaro Kenberg?
I'm just curious, you defer to the building adjacent with parking. What is that building, what's the parking situation as it stands now?
Send them better, as we speak to that.
Yes, we're, we're working out some channels, but, but the expectation is that it's significantly underused in the evening, and on a shared parking basis, we think that there's substantial capacity that would accommodate the needs of this project.
What is the address of that location? What is the address of that location we are looking for parking?
Um, it's directly behind the building.
Oh, no.
Yes. And there's, there are alternatives. There's a, a Trenton, a public parking garage, one block away, which we understand would have capacity to, but we, we waited to enter treaty agreements because we wanted to see the receptivity of the governing body to the project.
And with eighty-four apartments, we're roughly looking at compensating for eighty-four to, I guess, roughly one thirty, one-twenty-something parking spots for the building?
I, I do downtown redevelopment all the time. I would think that this is, given it's in the heart of the city, probably a number of one-point-one to one-point-four, one-point-five spaces per unit.
Madam President?
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't there, isn't there a parking, a parking garage like right there?
Right behind it, yes.
So like, I mean, I see it, like I'm on West State and I'm coming down, it's that garage, it's like...
It's directly behind it, yes.
Okay.
And, and the proximity is remarkable.
Right. I would think that that would be better than someone parking at a state building a distance away, right? Because we want the residents to be able to come and go in their, in their homes comfortably, so parking...
That would be, that would absolutely be the preferable location.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
So is there contingency plan in case they do not work with you with regard to parking?
We would, we would speak to the Trent Park Authority because there is a facility just a short block away, which we think would also, again, shared parking is, is an optimal use. It means that you're using parking that's available in the evening. It's a very efficient use of parking.
Madam President? None. Oh, sorry. Again, it looks nice, it sounds wonderful, but my concern again is now we're still, we're talking about residents who rent and pay to be home, to have to walk a block. What about handicapped people? What about disabled people? What about elderly people? Like how...
So it really, it's a really sensible question. The problem, the preference would certainly be to have a facility right behind the building. We think that that should work, but it's downtown. I mean, it's, it's an existing downtown, so we have to deal with the reality that exists. And I've done redevelopment projects literally around the state, and the optimum is to be as proximate as possible, but we've done projects one block, two blocks away. We prefer not to, and we do have a facility which we think will meet those needs, and if, if those facilities aren't available, we'll have to look at alternatives, but we, we think there are some very reasonable opportunities immediately adjacent as well as within a block.
Thank you. I want to yield to Mr. Mallon, he wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to try to set the stage a little bit more for you. Well, all we're doing at this stage is deciding to go forward, to talk, okay? So all these issues that you have are, are all issues for us to work through this process on, and the, the idea for tonight is for you to take a look and decide is this a concept we want to move forward for, have, have conversation. There's not only parking, but I'm sure there's going to be a host of other issues to be addressed. That's the process that we're going to, we will engage in. We would designate them as a redevelopment, or they would post escrow at our cost, and we would begin that dialogue to finalize, to facilitate this moving forward. That's what the goal of tonight is, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Mallon. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Council President? Uh, Councilwoman Williams?
But just ask for the future, this screen, can we push back a little bit? It's hard, actually, since I'm on hand, so you'll see everything, and I imagine some folks in the audience, too.
You won't be bug-eyed.
You have a longer electrical...
Council President? Council Vice President? To that end, I don't know if it's possible, but we have a screen over here as well. Can we have them both set up? Because we're actually struggling a little bit down this end to see that screen, so optimally, if we can have, when we have presentations, both screens set up, so we could see if that's possible. Presentation. Move before.
I can try and, I can engage that screen now if you want.
No, Mr. Bridges, you want it on screen. One second. He wants his own screen. He may not have his own screen. No, that's a... Thank you. Okay, let's move on.
As President, I believe the next presentation is Twenty-Eight West State Street? That's twenty, I'm sorry, M.G.A.G. Developers, that's it.
Greetings, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ahmed Alghari. Greetings. My name is Ahmed Alghari. I represent M.G.A.G., I'm a partner with my company here, the Seguda. Recently, we just established this company here to specialize in just in city of Trenton. We have a long history about construction repeating in different townships with transit. If you have the application in front of you, we've been done multiple properties here, including Forty-Six Colonial, which was a historical building. We have seventy-three, seven thirty-three Stuyvesant, we have six oh-two Stuyvesant, I have four oh-one dash four oh-three Center Street.
Sorry, give me one second, please. You said we have it here? Are we supposed to have a presentation here? Is the presentation that we're supposed to have?
Was it the application? I have a presentation here in front of that. You, I'm sorry, it was an application? It's an application. What application is that? I'm sorry, a development application. A development application.
Development unit.
I have it here. Okay, I have just... Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Give us about two minutes just to breeze through and...
Yeah, yeah, sure. Take your time.
It's okay. Mr. Ecology? Those are the extras. One for you and one for West Park.
Do you need any extra? Sorry? Do you need any extra?
You can go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir.
I'm fine.
So as I mentioned, we specialize in renovation and rehabbing residential properties here in city of Trent. As I mentioned, we, we've been done many properties here, as I mentioned, four oh-one, four oh-three Center Street. Now, we have a project at seven oh-five East State, which is like a couple of blocks away from here. We did Forty-Six Colonial, which is a historic building, that's a continuum, I mean, in seven units. Basically, we specialize in this, and we, let me say that we're really professional turning ugly buildings to beautiful masterpieces. So if you have any question about the project, we submitted to acquire, we're at the six properties, one in East State, which is, I think, a couple houses down from the project we have right now, and the rest is in Walla Street, in the back of that street.
Would you repeat once again the properties that you said you just recently did, was that seven zero five?
Seven oh-five East State, we're working on it right now, yes.
And what are the others?
And we have four oh-one dash four oh-three Center Street. We did...
Thank you.
Okay.
Um, does anyone have any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Mr. Sebastian?
Yes.
Mr. Seifus?
Certainly. Madam President, after presentations, I believe we, if your wish, could go to a public id, public comment on agenda items?
Uh, yes, please.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak for public id, public comment for any agen, any agenda items only? Seeing none, Madam President. Uh, we can move on to... All business, communications and petitions, of course, you will go on Thursday, when this is...
Excuse me, actually, Madam President, do you have one question? Communication petition.
Okay.
Item number two H, which is a civil action involving city side apartments. I just was curious exactly what this case is about, if that is possible to find out, because city side apartments has a lot of properties in my board. It's two H.
Mr. Bridges? I, I don't know, but it's a communication we received. I have not had an opportunity to look at it. These are communications that just came in, so I have not had a chance to look at that with any great detail. Two H, you said, Councilman?
Yes, sir. So now there's just notification that they have a lawsuit in, not actually...
I, I couldn't tell you that. I can give you some more information about them on Thursday, but all these are communications that's come in. We've received some of them. I've got an opportunity to look at some of them, but not with any great detail, but if you could give me until tomorrow morning, I'll be able to give you some more information on that.
Tell them.
And in fact, if, probably by the time you guys are done talking, I'll be able to get some more information for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Madam President, it's my understanding that we have another presentation from Mr. Abicruz regarding the animal shelter. Uh, Maria Richardson from the animal shelter. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I wouldn't mind if the VA would do a presentation. But, you know, more than the presentation, I am basically expressing to the council and to the public information that I have already provided about a month ago to the, to the council and some updates. So I will begin by, first of all, I am going to use the word impound facility to avoid misunderstandings, as we did earlier. So at the present time, we have ninety-six dogs in our impound facility, but the state requires from the city is to maintain a facility where we will do impoundment of stray animals and animals that are just on the streets, right? When we mentioned before, the health officer mentioned the idea that we are an impound facility and that we transitioned to a shelter. Basically, the administration wanted to, to maintain the facility in a different way, right? And so we started to talk about the notion of a no-kill shelter. That is all good. That is really beautiful, and I would, I wish that all the shelters around the impound facilities will work in that manner. However, we do not have the necessary infrastructure, the resources, or anything needed to be a no-kill shelter. So the idea that we are a no-kill shelter is a fantasy. We are an impound facility, and what we are required by state is that we keep the animals for seven days to allow for the owners to either come and rescue their dogs, or somebody, another organization will rescue the dogs, but we are not a rescue. And just to, to bring a little bit of clarity about the use of a shelter, shelter is a temporary house for anything, right? That we manage a shelter doesn't mean that we need to keep the dogs there for nineteen months, like is the case of some of the animals that we presently have. like is the case of some of the animals that we presently have. So, one of the, now that we are clear about the identity, the identity of the unit that we from, I will speak a little bit about the allegations of hostile work environment at the shelter. It was brought to my attention that some of the staff in the shelter were planning to file agreements for hostile work environment. As a manager, the first thing that I need to do is try to stop the problem. And so, when I met with the staff to find out what the allegations were, I decided to basically send the letters to some of the volunteers that the staff was saying that they would be either harassed or mistreated by. We didn't take that decision lightly. But just to give you an example, even today, somebody from my staff received a message saying, "Wear a flag jacket and helmet today." Right? That is an example. I got a letter, I got an email from another organization telling the city that we needed to cut ties with certain people because they were being harassed by some of the volunteers. To the point that this organization, which is a five oh-one C three organization that has been very vital for us, placing some of our animals, they started to call their funding sources, they started to call their contributors just to ask them not to help them, just because one volunteer could not get his her way with some of the dogs. So, we have a great group of volunteers that are really good for us, but when it comes to supporting and protecting the staff, that is, that is a responsibility that I don't take lightly. So, when those allegations were brought to my attention, I did, after doing some homework, I did what I thought that was the best thing to diminish the liability that the city has in these cases. Past that, I have, I think I already mentioned that at this point, we have ninety-six dogs. We have seventy-two dogs at the Yorlee Kennels and twenty-six here in Trenton. We have to move some of the animals that we have here because we had a P O S A inspection recently, and they are supposed to come back tomorrow to make sure that we don't have cages and kennels in the hallways. But we face fines of seven thousand dollars daily if we don't. However, at the rate that we are recently paying, the city will pay seventy-five thousand dollars, a little bit over seventy-five thousand dollars per month. And that is outrageous for a city that has sixty thousand dollars in the budget for senior services. And I am not saying that one thing needs to substitute or replace the other, but we need to make sure that we are grounded, that we really know what we can and what we cannot do. Right? I don't think that this city has the facilities or the resources to manage a no-kill shelter. We need to continue to be what the law requires us to be and what we can actually manage to be. An impound facility that receives stray dogs, we keep them for seven days unless we have a court mandate, like in some cases, but it's your topic that we even think that we can have dogs for a limited time at the shelter. At this time, we are correcting some state violations that we had in the floors in the kennels. So, as we speak, we have a company addressing those issues. It has been a long time to actually get that problem abated. We move all the animals to accommodate both things. The contractor to correct the violations and also the violations that we have with P O S A. However, again, for how long can we keep paying seventy-five thousand dollars a month? About the trailers, we are already in the permitting process. The trailer already conducted, the contractors already conducted the survey to install plumbing and electricity. According to them, it will take about ninety days to have the trailers up and running. I want to address also the four million dollars from A R P. Please know that the only thing that was brought up to the previous council was the plan. And in that plan for A R P was, four million dollars were included for the new shelter. There is no ordinance resolution or anything appropriating that money for the new shelter. Mr. Avich, correct me if I am wrong, I think that that one is still available and eventually, I will come before the council, or Mr. June will come before the council to appropriate that money for the new shelter that we are planning. But that the previous council approved the money, that is a lie. Okay? So, in, talking a little bit more about the finances available. The Department of Community Affairs gave the city five hundred thousand dollars for operating the impound. Out of that five hundred thousand dollars, you, this council, a few months ago, approved four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars to pay the kennel. That money brought us up to September thirtieth. So, I will come before this council again to request another appropriation for October, November, and December. And I anticipate that it will be close to three hundred thousand dollars. So, from September twenty-twenty-two, that we started to place dogs at the kennel in Yorlee, we have already paid them seven hundred thousand dollars. That is, all the, those are all the updates that I have for you today, and I'm not sure if you have questions or how the council president would like to handle it from here.
So, thank you, Director Richardson, for that information. That clears up a lot of misinformation that is out there. So, it's greatly appreciated putting things into perspective that we are paying Yorlee, seven hundred thousand dollars to date. Seven thousand dollar fines daily, equaling seventy-five thousand dollars per month, equaling nine hundred thousand dollars per year that we are paying to be out of compliance. When we have seniors who are suffering, we have our young people that are suffering, we have our community that is suffering, so we are paying, we are footing a bill that we cannot afford. Is in essence what I'm hearing right now. And as much as we want to help everybody and everything, the people, we got elected by the people in our community. I'm compassionate. I have a beautiful dog who was just in the hospital for eleven hours. I cried tears because I thought we were about to leave, lose him. We have to take care and we need to be in compliance. Folks want to throw hand, throw negative at what we're doing, but no one is seeing. And I haven't heard it, this anyway, the compassion that we have actually been out of compliance and have been paying all the monies that we have put out right now. So, I thank you for what you've done. I thank you and your staff for what you have done and even the volunteers, what they have come in and what they have done. But right now, we have to do what is best for our city, for our residents, the ones who put us in these seats, and we have to be responsible. And I don't know if any of my constituents, my colleagues, if they have anything to say, but I thank you for the presentation and clearing up a lot of information that was out there. Madam Vice President.
So, thank you for your presentation, Director Richardson. I think that, and we discussed this at length before, in order for us to help deal with this issue with these animals, right? Because what you're saying is, we're at capacity. So, now what happens when people start calling tonight, or they start calling tomorrow, or the next day? Where do the animals go? Does anybody go out and pick the animals up? We're already out of compliance. Where can they go? When complaints start coming in for breeding, people with dogs held up in houses and things like that, we need enforcement. We need bodies that are in position that can go out and deal with these situations and these people, right? Hence, the breeding ordinance that my council colleagues put forward that we passed. Now, we've gotten some great feedback as to how we can work to amend even where we are with that, to tighten up. But therein, again, for those that control the purse strings and the money, we need help in hiring the staff that will be able to go out and enforce what is going on. Otherwise, we're beating a dead horse. We have a problem with dogs. They're everywhere. I live on the island. We have a dog that runs around a pit bull that this eleven-year-old boy tries to walk that gets loose. He has terrorized the neighborhood and tore up two little dogs over there already and a cat with three legs. Like, my whole thing is, what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? We need to have enforcement proceedings in place to deal with stuff like this. Residents shouldn't be scared. People shouldn't have to deal with this. The animals shouldn't be out on the street. Animals shouldn't be fought. The dogs shouldn't be bred to death and then when they're done with them, they just dump them out in the street. It's unacceptable. We need help. We need the money. We need enforcement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to think about Kenber.
Director Richardson.
You do.
So, I mean, just to be clear, we've had conversations about some of this, and I just wanted to kind of put some stuff out for the public as well, some conversations that I've had with you, some questions that I've asked you that you have provided answers to. So, with regards to the volunteers, that is ongoing question. How many of the volunteers were actually terminated? And of the remaining volunteers, are we managing a certain status of hours for them to volunteer in the shelter, to be able to care for the animals properly or to assist properly?
We actually, I think we sent letters to nine volunteers. We suspended nine volunteers. We have, excuse me. Okay. We have about thirteen, fourteen active volunteers. But not just that. From January to today, we have hired two additional A C Os, and we hired seven additional. We hired five animal attendants and two administrative staff. We need, the beauty of volunteerism, right, is that you, people help you in what you need, right? Not in what you want to do, right? At this point, we need volunteers to help us walk the animals. We don't need volunteers to take photos. We don't need volunteers to clean the kennels. We don't need volunteers to check the files of the animals. We just need volunteers to help us walk in the animals, right? And I know that, you know, people feel good when they volunteer, so that is part of being, and as a part of a society. But you appreciate the job of the volunteers when they are actually helping you in your needs. The needs that we have right now is walking the animals, right? Some volunteers are helping taking the animals to adoption events. We don't, we no longer want to do that because that is a huge liability. If a volunteer gets bitten by a dog as they transport the animals to adoption services, that would be a problem for the city. So, what I would like to do is for the staff to transport the animals to adoption events. And I would love if the volunteers would limit their help to walking the animals.
Director? Director, okay. Again, there's seventy-six dogs in our shelter now? Is that right?
That is correct.
With seventy-six in our, seventy-six dogs in our shelter, how many staff are currently in our shelter?
We have five animal attendants and six A C Os.
Oh, eleven.
Yes.
And eleven, is that essentially enough to do all these duties and perform all these roles?
Not if we have ninety-six dogs, but if sexually, we should only have twenty at the most. Because that is another issue that I didn't mention. The state has given us also violations, not because, well, yeah, we do have a violation because of the floors, which we are correcting now. But every time that we have a call with the state, that in the past, they were weakly, but they understood that we were bringing at least the managing part under control. So, we are not required to meet with the state every week. However, every time that we get a violation, they said, "This is a self-inflicted problem because you are, you are acting like a rescue. You are not a rescue. You are an impound facility."
How much is that additional fine for being a violation?
I really don't recall what is the, the state has not given us any funds yet. They have been giving us just the violations.
Thank you.
So, and we spoke about this before, and you even said that it was something that you had thought about was, you know, specific to the volunteers. Could there be something that is fine with specific duties, what they can do, what they actually cannot do, what would, what would result in termination? Because, you know, at this point, we do have ninety-six dogs, not twenty, you know? So, we probably do need some extra assistance. So, is that something that, you know, this city or your department has thought about doing to be very, very specific to what volunteers can and cannot do while they were there? What specific hours and things of that nature?
Absolutely. We are actually, as a staff, we are revising the volunteers handbook so that we make sure that we are very specific in what we need and the type of behavior that we will accept at the shelter. And I want to bring something else to your attention. We have volunteers, right, that have, I'm gonna leave it at that. Yes. I'm sorry for that.
I have a very few extra real questions. Again, a lot of this is just for putting it out there publicly. Like I said, we have had conversations. I've had these concerns many times, you know, about the shelter. Regarding the new shelter, what is, what is the projectile for when we will have that new shelter? When we will see that new shelter? When we will be able to be presented with the four million A R P money to, you know, put towards the new shelter?
Well, as I mentioned to you before during executive session, we already considered, we are considering now the third location. The first location, we got to the point of developing conceptual, complete conceptual plans. However, we were not able to acquire a building that we needed in order to accommodate all the services that we would like to have. And so, the second location was too contaminated and we have to move from that one. The third location, we have already conducted surveys. We already have an architect in place to develop conceptual planning. And it's a small portion, I would say, about ten percent of the And it is a small portion, I would say about 10% of the land that is contaminated, but it's lightly contaminated. The third one. So, I am confident that that is the space that we are going to use for the shelter. So, once we get the conceptual and specifications, we'll put it out for me. That usually takes a month or so. And then, I will bring it before you for your consideration along with the appropriation for the money.
And finally, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Now, we can hold 20 dogs in a perfect world, in the shelter that we have now. What would we be able to hold dogs, cats, and others in this new shelter?
We are looking forward... Yes, we are looking forward to having 70 kennels for dogs and 50 for cats.
And just so we have 76... 96 dogs on the line, minus the 20, so 76 dogs lives on the line as we stand right now. Again, what was the timeframe we're looking at as far as the new kennel? When we can transition to that?
The time? Probably 18 months at the least. I would say 18 months to two years. Because I don't want to sell you a dream.
Thank you, Director.
Sure.
Madam President?
Madam Vice President.
Just real quick, I'm sorry, thank you. So, just for clarity, when we're talking about reinforcement, right? For the people that could go out and really do something, just again, the ACOs, what do they do? And what is the difference between, like, if we call them versus the police department, people that go out and do something? Can you just tell us the difference?
Absolutely. The ACOs basically are able to go... Every time that we get a phone call, they are supposed to go and pick up the strays and that sort of things, right? The regular business of the impound. The police basically only intervenes with animal cruelty cases. We try to deputize our ACOs to be able to handle animal cruelty cases as well. But we were told that we are not able to do that. So, sometimes the line is a little bit blurred when it comes to that. But we have been working with the 411, with the operators, so that the calls are addressed the right way.
But as of right now, so if there was someone, like I said, we're already at capacity, what can people expect realistically if someone were to find a stray dog tonight? And they make a call to the ACO?
They still need to take the animals.
And where are you gonna take it?
Well, we will be in non-compliance. We need to take the animals, unfortunately. As it is right now, I mean, that happened to us yesterday. In the morning, we really did not even know how to handle, right? The situation, because we are trying to avoid the fines. But now, we have 26 animals, we are six over capacity. And we still need to continue to take animals as they come.
And who would we call for the people that have, like, the excess dogs in the house? Right, so say you have some of their breeding dogs, they have these dogs in the house. Are we calling the ACO or the police department?
Yeah, the ACOs. And if they consider necessary to be appropriated by the police, that is a decision that they will make. And in many cases, that is what happens. Or the opposite, the police gets called for whatever. And then, they find out that there are 12 dogs there, then they call the ACOs. Or they raid a building and they need to place the animals at them. There is a very close relationship with the police and the shelter.
Are the ACOs working 24/7?
We have ACOs in 24/7. Sure.
Okay.
Yes, Madam Williams.
Thank you. Good evening, Director. How are you?
I'm doing well, how about you?
Yeah, good to see you.
Good seeing you as well.
So, I have a number of questions. I want to start off with regarding the new animal shelter. Something my, some of colleagues have already asked about that. But do you have more of an exact timeline since the architect is on board when you may have an expected groundbreaking?
We already have an architect firm on site, right? But only to do the conceptual, not to do the actual plans of the shelter. That, I need to come before you. I need to put an RFP out, and I will have to come before you to hire. This is an architecture firm that we are contracting under $17,000, $17,500. Because that's the amount that I can actually contract without coming before you. In order to get specific plans and the whole layout, I need to come before you. But for that, I need for this firm to complete the conceptual and give me the initial specifications. So, hopefully, I will get that conceptual within the next month. And then, we will need to prepare the whole specification out to contract. Could be him, could be another firm to do the complete layout. And after that, once we get that, then I need to come before you again for construction. So, that's why it's really difficult for me to say it's gonna be December 2024, right?
For groundbreaking and having us... Let me back up a step. For us to have you come after you have a successful RFP submission period, would we be likely looking at January 2024?
No, we probably would be looking at August 2024.
Okay, to complete the RFP process?
Yes.
And then, at that point, ask for the appropriation for $40,000?
Correct.
Thank you. And then, can you, as far as the ACOs and Councilwoman Feliciano... I'm sorry, yeah, that's woman. I think it was, yeah, Councilwoman Feliciano spoke about the ACOs and... Thank you. There's just so many apps on this team. She spoke about the ACOs and really getting out there and starting to enforce the reordnance. The ordinances already have on the books. And one of the most frustrating things is to know that there are animals out there that are baby stray, that they're being bred, but also that we're in such a tight financial bind. And we also, you need more personnel, we'd like to see more personnel hired. So, I wanted to ask, would it be possible for us to get a plan from your office within 90 days about hiring additional staff that will be able to be devoted specifically to the enforcement of the ordinances that are on our books in the city of Trenton? And as much as I would love to say 60 days, that to be fair, then 90 days is more appropriate. But we need to get on this. Quite frankly, it's the most disgusting crime someone can do is what they do to an animal after doing it to even a baby. But also, when we have the tools and our toolkit to take care of some of these issues and we're not able to, that's the most concerning thing as a public official and as someone who loves animals.
Absolutely. Just, I have two animals, I have actually two pit bulls. So, I love animals too. Regarding the plan, I can absolutely do that. But it would be just a plan. As you know, any new staffing will have to be approved first by DCA, then by this council. But yes, I have a laundry list of things that we would like to do in animal control.
That would be great, because perhaps we could partner with DCA specifically on this issue. I like to share, by the way. So, my final question is, and I believe I do know the answer from growing up in Trenton, particularly even these last years that we have so many animals. Do we also subsequently have a problem with folks from the suburbs leaving animals behind in Trenton, dating a longer one?
Absolutely. I mean, I have heard numerous rumors of that happening, that we are getting dogs from all over the county being dropped in Trenton.
And with that, being that we do have cameras to try to track and catch illegal dumpers, and we have other cameras around the city, are there maybe a few particular areas that we could add some cameras to to try to catch the folks that do this consistently, particularly down by the river?
Yes. Yes, we will be actually asking for help with the police department identifying those cases.
Do we presently have any cameras near Duck Island for this purpose?
Most likely we do, but I don't know.
That would be very well done in the future. Thank you very much, Madam.
Thank you.
Council President?
Just a moment, real quick. When we're putting up cameras, we have to have some power supply. We don't necessarily have that, everyone's out with requesting. So, then we have to get PSC and G. We'll obviously hold up and then if it comes, the city response will call the PSC and G. But we will put cameras everywhere that we can, in order to know.
Great. Please, sir.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. So, Director Richardson, to your point, and one to Councilwoman Williams' point about asking about the plan within the 90 days, I would like to suggest, like, as the health officer, when Yvette came forward when we're doing the Health Board Report or the Board of Health Report, that we highlight areas like this, like our problematic areas. Like, I'd like to see... I would like to have seen, like, the animal shelter, the highlights, and what we're doing and what is going on, right? And then, again, things with COVID or whatever, the hot topics are. So that that way, we know you're on top of what it is. We could have seen the plan on what's going forward and things like that, right? And so, that just took me back to that moment, that when we start highlighting, or when we start meeting quarterly or however, we decided to hear the presentations from the Department of Health. Because we, of course, are gonna follow this topic to make sure, because it's... The ball's been dropped, it's said people took things out of context or whatever's going on. We just want some resolution to this for the animals, for the city, right? It's costing us a lot of money. But if we can go ahead and think about incorporating certain reports, just so we can see the updates and things that are going on.
Absolutely. That is the format for future meetings. You know, as she explained, it needed to... The format that she used to do needed to be the first.
And thank you for your information too. While we appreciate the volunteers, love that they are definitely on their job with making sure to provide information. We heard you in respect, the fact too, that in being the volunteer, it's to volunteer and do the work as needed by the city at the shelter, not to dictate what should be done, what to tell. There could be separate conversations, respectfully, between, I guess, a lead from the organization and the director, however you choose to see fit, to see if there could be a common ground. But if there are cases where people are overstepping lines and boundaries, it does need to be addressed as well. So, I'm glad that you now have your checklist and you have everybody sign off. So, everything will be very clear as we move forward. And again, I'm thankful for the volunteers and everything, but we need to figure this out together. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to have Councilman Harris.
Director, my question is regarding the violations. Are we given a timeline? Is it you have to give them an address within six months, three months, a year? What's the timeline?
Yes, actually, the... Well, I will speak only from January on, since that's the time that I have been there. So, when I started in January, we had already been given a list of violations. I actually like listening to firsthand information. So, I called the state so that they could come back, inspect the shelter again, so that they can give me my list of violations, right? So, we basically curated most of the violations. And then, for the floor, we actually asked for an extension because we couldn't have animals there and we're trying to place the animals somewhere else. So, the latest extension that we got was until October 15. And so, we are already correcting those violations. When the state comes to do their inspection, we will now have the violations already. So, hopefully, that's it. Councilwoman.
Really quickly, so we can kind of move on and save time. But thank you, first of all, for your presentation. I just wanted to ask a quick, were you able to review our Animal Commission Board? Or like, would you be in support of that?
I actually did. But we need to have a separate conversation about that. Because really, you are the Board of Health, right? And the Board of Health includes the activities of the shelter. So, in my book, there is not a need to have a separate board for the shelter, but you as a body and the health officer and the animal control, the manager, should be just dealing with those issues and me in the administrative part. But I don't think that there is a need for an additional board when you are the Board of Public Health.
Thank you.
Sure, very much. I want to move this along, I'm gonna spend a moment. I do want to just chime in here, I'm sorry. So, I just wanted to try to wrap this up with... I wanted to ask a question about the adoptions, the returns, and the takings. Can we get periodically what it is? Because I think that would help us as well. How many animals on average have we gotten adopted or returned to the owner? How many animals, when they are adopted, actually end up coming back for whatever reason? And then, the final part for me is with directions for our volunteers. I want to make sure that we're all very clear. You're saying that the only assistance that we need when it comes to our volunteers is for them to be walking, is to walk the dogs. So, yes, okay. So, is it you, is it your staff that is making sure that they know, so everybody understands the lines? So, they know that they shouldn't be going by having cow? They shouldn't be going into any rooms? They should not, they should not, whatever it is? And letting them know, this is what we need from you? This is the need when you're volunteering, just like you said, it is, I need you to fill this need. Otherwise, there's no need for them to be there, you don't have any needs to fulfill. So, is your staff being clear? Or is that, who's that directive come from?
The directive comes initially from me to the manager, right? And of course, with the health officer, she is the immediate supervisor of the manager. We are working on, we are revising the handbook because we want to streamline the process. We want to make sure that everybody understands these are the rules, this is what we need, this is the behavior that we would accept, this is the non-acceptable behavior. The same thing that we do for our staff, right? So, we are in the process of working with those things. Immediately, we have the manual ready. I will submit it to you if you wish, so that you can see it as a body. And I really cannot provide the statistics of how many animals were adopted and how many came back, but I should be able to provide that information for you within the next couple of days. We have some information that we prepared. I think your health officer is trying to show that she has something. Okay, so, Ms. Yvette provided some information on page 18 of the report. Okay, so Ms. Yvette provided some information on page 18 of the report that she presented, but we will be giving you, you know, she has information from 2019 here until 2022, but I will be providing information for this year.
Excellent. Rebecca? Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Certainly.
Yes. Okay, Council President, moving on to whole business. We have ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Orders 23-048, ordinance amending chapter 146 of the Code of City in Trenton supplementing various redevelopment plans and the land development ordinance to prevent cannabis uses. That may for roll call. I don't know if there's any questions.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Orders 23-059, ordinance creating the position of principal mail clerk in the Department of Water and Sewer fixing the salary range, therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for implementation of the same.
Questions? Will call.
Certainly. Moving on to resolutions. We do have an executive session that we will have at the end of this meeting. Resil, ordinance 23, resolution 23 dash. I'm sorry? Resolution 23-467, a resolution authorizing the creation of an ADHOP committee of the city council to consult and work with the administration on disbursement of funds under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Six, seven, I'm sorry.
Sorry, let me.
Do we have any questions?
Council President.
Council Vice President.
Regarding the third seat, how, how do we, how are we going to propose the third council person if there's a third that wants to be on the committee?
So I'm not sure if we're allowed to decide. I don't know how legal about making that decision. If legal could help assist with that?
I'm sorry?
So would you vote up here? Vote. So, so is that, so is that something that is done on this evening?
I, I don't believe it has to be voted this evening. You're going to create the ADHOP subcommittee, and then obviously when that subcommittee meets, we'll have a public vote.
So I understand that correctly, president and vice president are automatically a part of ADHOP. Then by vote, we decide the third person. Is that correct? Okay.
The vote is to be agreed, the committee, and at the same time, name the third member.
So we need to make a motion to create a committee? And then do we do a vote afterwards for the, for the third person, correct? So we're making a, we're making a vote to now create the committee, is that correct? We need to make a motion?
The motion will be to pass the resolution, creating the committee, and rather than bifurcating, and at the same time, naming a specific individual as the third member.
That's a whole lot of my point. So we're going to make, we're making a motion to create the committee? We're making a motion to also have president, vice president already on the committee?
That's already in the, see, when we created this, nobody knew who the third person was going to be, so we left.
So we have to do that, so we vote after we have gotten the motion passed.
Council President, may I make a suggestion?
Go ahead.
First, excuse me, first move to create the subcommittee, then upon adoption of that, approval of that, nominate an individual to serve as the third member, and then vote.
So I meant to make a motion to create a subcommittee.
Council President, question?
Councilwoman Williams.
What if any legislative powers would the ADHOP committee have if we were purely an advisory committee?
That is a vice member who is consulting with the mayor, is that correct?
It's essentially, as I understand, a subcommittee to be in consultation with the administration, vote and have a discussion on how these funds will be dispersed, and raise suggestions and hear suggestions, and that way, the administration will work in conjunction and to come back before this body and approve those expenditures.
Madam President?
So my follow-up question would be, so this committee would be able to veto any proposed use of ARC money that would normally come up in a resolution to this body?
No, you can consult, and then as those come before this body, you can approve them or reject them. So I guess my use, I guess my confusion is use the word veto.
Would this, would the ADHOP committee be able to reject a proposal from the administration?
No.
I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, yes, Councilwoman. I'm.
No, not at all.
I think we're both.
Okay.
It's just to try to work with that to make sure that everything's smooth and in agreement on the ARC funds.
Okay, thank, I just want to make sure that it's fair to our interest as a council, but also fair to the administration's interest.
Council President?
Council Vice President?
So probably, I'm sorry, thank you, Councilwoman Figueroa Kenberg. Councilwoman Williams and to council colleagues, right? It's, it's not, it's to listen and to bring suggestions, as legal has said. So if you all have suggestions, right, we all have thoughts of where we'd like to see the funds to go. So you have something, and we're sitting in and we're listening in to what they're saying, they're like, oh, we want to give a million dollars over here, yeah, that's nice. But we'd also like you to consider this as a project as well. It's just giving a little more feedback to say, it doesn't take anything away from the body entire. We will communicate back to the body what's going on. It's just to have a seat at the table, to hear the thoughts or the, or the mindset of where the administration is looking to go, and then to say, okay, that's cool, but from council's perspective, here are projects where things that we'd like to consider to look into as well as we move forward with that. And that would be with the collective thoughts of, of all of you, of all of us together, moving that forward. And then when it's decided, then we bring it back for the vote like we normally would do. But at no time, I get your concerns, no, it wouldn't be something that was more for like, no, no, everything still comes to us. It's just giving us a seat up close and personal, instead of us waiting for them to show us what they want. It's us saying, also, please consider this as we move together. Thank you.
Council President, if I may just add on to that point by Council Vice President?
Yes, Mr. Bridges.
Yeah, the, the crux of this subcommittee is, I know we've had a pretty long-term, robust conversation, but, but, but the, as Council Vice President said, the real purpose of the subcommittee is to have that open dialogue, to have communication between the administration and government, and to take everyone's input, so that when we're coming before this body with resolutions, be it in this instance, be it in the cannabis instance, be it in the redevelopment instance, that this council, as Council Vice President Feliciano says, has a seated table, we're not coming to you with first blush, expecting you to digest something in a couple of days. So it's really a line of communication and line of involvement and, and inclusive, inclusive discussion, which is the real reason for not just this subcommittee, but any other subcommittees that we're contemplating moving forward, is to keep the lines of communication open, to have the give and take and the dialogue and the Faulkner Act envisioned. So that's really going to be the purpose of this subcommittee and other subcommittees posted this morning.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Garcia?
So as I understand it, I'm sorry, are?
Make the motion.
Are the motions?
It's been first and second.
The motion is to create a subcommittee?
That's correct.
Members of the House, are motions to create the subcommittee?
Anybody, the motion to create a subcommittee, the motion by the council?
ADHOP, sir.
Right.
ADHOP.
Say that once again, sir.
I'm sorry, it's an ADHOP committee.
Oh, the ADHOP.
Correct.
Okay, ma'am, the motion to create the ADHOP committee. So moved?
It's been moved the second? It's been moved the second? I'll call the roll, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano? Oh, I'm sorry, the Jeff. Councilwoman Feliciano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Frisman?
Yes.
Motion carried. And I, as I understand, if I'm understanding correctly, now there will be a motion to select the individual? Yes, there'll be a motion, and then to select an individual to be voted on to serve as a third member of that ADHOP committee. Okay.
So we would like to ask members of council, are there any individuals who are, who want to serve?
Um, I don't believe, Madam President, I think I need a motion and second for discussion.
Ma'am, second.
Oh, I'm sorry, so thank you. Got it? Got it?
If the council person is interested in serving, they would turn the microphone on and say, I am interested. It's not a hand raised or a signal that might be missed. They need to speak in the mic and say, yes, yes, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I may. Council President?
Mr. Bridges.
If I may, that's, that's, that's a great suggestion, but even when someone expresses an interest, it still has to be a motion. Or do I appoint that person?
Right, we're just trying to figure out who is actually interested.
I thought you were. Okay, sorry.
No, which?
Maybe do, simply like we would appoint another, can that be done?
Anyone? So I see Councilman Harrison Gonzalez, I see seeing their lights on and off, I'm not sure.
I think most of us are interested. I am. And I am also.
And Williams?
I am also.
And Figueroa Kenberg?
Okay.
So we got all of them.
Wait, Madam President, would you please?
Yes.
I, I think that we did clarify this before, but just for clarity, regardless of who is elected to serve with Madam President, Madam Vice President on this ADHOP committee, all council members have input, they can provide input, whoever is there in the committee and all, all, these can be considered, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
So can we move, I, I mean, I don't, I don't know, we're learning this as we go. Can we put it so that there are stipulations? Maybe we say that there's every three, four months, we rotate out to a new council person at a, and say that we have, you have the president, the vice president, and then every quarter, a new council member?
Counsel, motion, come in. Council President, may I respond to that? I, I think the answer is yes, but if that's something that's contemplated, this is going to have to be pulled to the table to be able to add those provisions. That's not contemplated in here. So you can either amend it, excuse me, on the floor now, but it seems to be a bit technical in terms of going through those logistics, or it could be further fleshed out and brought back at the next meeting after further counsel's preference on editing.
So, good, this is coming to you, however, say, Councilman Beach just said.
I'm just thinking in language, in other words, we would amend the part about the third member to say, on a rotating basis, not to exceed whatever, three months, I don't know. Just thinking on that.
But again, you're saying, you also said that it is not really, we can put in any number of members. Quorum, does it still apply, is really, I guess, the question we have. Are we allowed to go over? Are we allowed to have four or more?
We can't have four.
We cannot?
No.
Okay, all right, so then.
The statute says any number, I don't know what they were thinking about, because it would violate the public meetings.
Okay, so, but the colleagues up here, is everyone in agreement with the, we say that every quarter, we rotate out? Yes, I think that is fine. Yes, please, Mr. Beach.
We need to appropriate all money by the end of 2024. We're now in August, so that means we have roughly five quarters left, which, you know, there's five rotating seats, that's the availability, but then you'll also be changing your president, vice president polls on the new year. So I think maybe we want to just take a step back and think about how all that will play out, rather than try to do it on the floor tonight.
Maybe let's go in on Thursday?
That's fine, I think we could.
So I'm thinking, because we're in October, and if we do it every three months, by the time we get to the new year with the new president, new vice president, it'll be a changing of the guards then, so that'll actually be right in line.
But then you and whoever takes over your seat, whoever takes over vice president, Feliciano's seat, will get basically two flights at the end. That's fine.
Got you. All right, then. Okay. Do we have to make this decision this evening?
Um, you do not. Again, there's really, I see him, Mr. Colagi can add his thoughts with this as well. You can either nominate and vote on that third person now, and then have dialogue subsequent to that in terms of fleshing out the terms and how long, or this can be, the second option, it could be basically carried without being pulled to table and have a conversation with Mr. Colagi to address those issues, so it could be brought back here on Thursday for a vote. Or third option is you can pull and or table this and revise it and bring it back to the next meeting. Again, just to reiterate, however, this is a subcommittee, it's a, the purpose of it is to have that dialogue and have communications. It should not be seen as a barrier to coming before this body to ask for consent to program monies going forward. It's certainly, as I understand, and this is council's desire to have this based on Mr. Beach's conversation last night, and he very much welcomed this subcommittee to address this issue, and in fact, opposed it to the prior council. So it's really, you know, it's, it's council's prerogative how they want to address it. My suggestion would be to nominate and vote on that third person now, so that there is no loss of time, and loss of dialogue, and loss of, loss of communication, and then have follow correspondence with Mr. Colagi and myself in terms of fleshing out the term of that third party, or that third member, excuse me. Madam President, there's no warrant to the term, so theoretically, in a couple months, you could pass another resolution changing the third person, because you're not giving them a year or any period of time. So if there's a subsequent resolution, you could change whoever the third person is.
Madam President? I, but I.
Sorry.
It's Madam Vice President.
So maybe instead of naming the titles, what if we nominate you, me, the third person tonight, in name? And then when we move to the rotation, then it just rotates and it doesn't matter, right? So we're not saying the president and the vice president and the third person, we're saying, we're not. and the third person. We're saying, we're nominating council president Frisbee, personal Feliciano, vice CVP, and the third person with rotated terms of quarter, then that way, it's not limited to the seats being stuck. We can rotate and then three people can come on, you know what I'm saying? Like, then that way, everybody, everybody has, has a shot.
You can just amend the resolution to say, shall consist of a committee consisting of three council members to be nominated or to be selected by council.
Yes.
In this way, it could be the president, the vice president, or any member. So how about an amendment to the resolution to change the composition to the following verbiage, shall consist of three council members to be designated by council?
Okay.
And that leaves the options open to everybody. And then you can change it with another resolution. Well, actually, you wouldn't even need a resolution. You're creating a committee who just need to vote to change the comp, to change who's on it.
Right.
But as far as the seating is concerned, we need, you're, so I'd like to leave it as we have the two?
Right.
President and vice presidents this evening. I'd like to hold off, we can name the position for the third one and then give the name. I'd like to be, have council be able to at least have a vote to digest it and weigh in with each other. And then Thursday, we come back with the person who we are appointing.
That, that, that works, I think that's.
Okay, that's not works legally, that's not.
That's appropriate.
It is, we can do, we can absolutely do, absolutely do that. We don't, as long as we're not doing anything with QRM. So we can do that, okay? All right, thank you.
So I'll be going to the solicitors. There another motion that needs to be brought about for this resolution at this point, or no?
Uh, that appears not at this time.
Okay.
Move to create it. It's been, well, it will be moved upon Thursday, and then Thursday, I guess, based on further dialogue, there'll be a motion on Florida to nominate that third party and/or potentially depending upon how far we get, designate the term of that third, third member.
Very well, moving on to additional resolutions. Moving on to Resolution 23-450, a resolution certifying that the city council of the city, city council of the city of Trenton review the corrective action plan for the city's transition year 2021 audit.
Questions?
Madam President?
Madam Vice President?
Thank you. So we spoke to BA Cruz the other day at Dr. Review, um, about the recommendation and the finding about the utility receivables and everything, and the, and the fact that, um, there was a segment left out, or when, when the city responds back to address the recommendations of the audit firm about the uncollectible amounts being written off in active accounts, credit balances, unexplained adjustments should be investigated and resolved. I guess since this was already turned in to the audit firm, just to be mindful of the, the things that we discussed, will, when we look forward into future, if the finding shows again, will the correct, you know what I mean, will additional verbiage be added to address the issues of the firm?
Good evening, council, Madam President. The 2022 budget is currently being finalized, and when the findings are done, when our recommendations are put in, is when we will be implementing the, the recommendations as to how we need to be addressing each question. Yes, but unfortunately, because this one is already done, the recommendations admitted, we can't go back. Yes?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you. And the next resolution is actually the federal one, which is similar to the, to our portraing, except that is for the federal portion.
Madam President, about that one, Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
When it comes to the single audit and the, and the grants and everything, right, about the underspending of funds, um, and following the timeliness of reports and things like that, what are we going to do? I know we don't have, we talked about it, we don't have a grants administrator for the city per se. What are we going to do to help strengthen the use of grant dollars and everything so that we're not in a position where we're giving money back, or where we're not filing the proper reports and things as needed? Have we, are we looking to put that? I mean, I see the explanation about due to work overload and updating the policies and procedures and timeliness. Are we going to have someone or some people that are actually going to be tasked with overseeing all grants so that we don't have these same things?
Yes, so take this off, echo. Madam President, Adam Cruz is administrator, once again. The, when it comes to CDVG, there are quarterly reports that need to be, that need to be made. Um, the CDVG portion was taken from, um, housing and economic development at the time and given to Maria for money, Maria actually to monitor the person who was on the helm of CDVG. And since then, I believe Maria has also hired an additional person to assist with the, um, with the day-to-day upkeep of the records. Um, you may see something in 2022, perhaps, right? We're closing 2022. I believe Maria picked up in, I think in the beginning of '22, if I'm not mistaken. But, um, we are doing the best that we can to make sure that this is the case, that we are actually submitting the, the records, feedback, submitting the records timely. Um, we can have a more in-depth conversation when Maria's here, because she's the one that handles that portion. Um, you mentioned something else, and I just forgot, there was a two-part question.
The part about, just the one on the other part, it, it still fell under the community block development grant. It said that due to work overload, the activities were not carried out in a timely manner, and then the unspent funds. So are we, want to be watching to make sure all grants, not just this, but that we are, we are maximizing the benefit of the monies that we receive?
That is correct. And, and I think one of the mistakes that I see municipality do time and time again is, is that they are eager to actually, which is a good thing, to actually try to get money for the city, but then once the money comes in, we may not have the personnel to really go into it and use the funding, and then, you know, we come in front of you saying, we didn't spend the money, we got to give it back. So we have put a huge emphasis on our directors that if the, if they don't have the personnel or the time for them to actually use the funding, don't apply for it. Because then it looks bad on us that we are not using the funding, and of course, then we have to give it back, and perhaps another municipality would have had use for it, you know, and the money kind of goes back to the federal government. So we have emphasized that time and time again in the last probably year, that we should not be getting money if we're not going to expect it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam President, will that be roll call or consent?
Roll call, please.
For both?
Yes, please.
No. Resolution 23-449, resolution of the city council of Trenton, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of legal service, of legal services agreement related to PFAS litigation services.
Questions? Madam President? Madam Vice President?
Do we have a legal exhibit?
I don't recall.
Judging by your question, the answer is no, but I will email that to you, because I do have that. It's essentially the retention agreement with the local firm who's going to be overseeing this class action for us. I will summarize it for you. It's no money out of the city's coffers. It's a class action. The attorney's fees will be paid out of the low start amount they work on, but I, I clearly did not get that to you. I thought I did, but I will email that to everyone tonight. That's, that's prepared and ready to go for this counsel's consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Just for, if I, if I may elaborate on that a bit further, Council Vice President?
President?
Um, this is the PFAS case. This is a case related to a class actions going on around the country, where there are in excess of $2 billion available to certain municipalities that own utility companies, and specifically water. Um, to date, there have been 10 municipalities in the state of New Jersey, including, including Newark, Orange, Atlantic City, that are participating in this. And essentially, um, they are the, the, the lead council out of New Orleans is representing all these municipalities in this class action, and their job is to call as much money as they can for the entities that had operating utilities during the relevant time period.
Roll call?
Roll call?
Yes, please.
No. Resolution 23-451, resolution authorizing an amendment to the contract which was awarded through fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 19:448-20.5. sec, with the law office of Parker McKay, PA, to provide professional legal services in regard to staffing, human resources, Faulkner Act matters, and related litigation in the amount not to exceed $50,000.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution 23-452, resolution authorizing settlement of a civil action in the matter of.
You.
Thank you. It's to be discussed in executive session. That's correct, Mr. Clark. Yes, sir. I imagine roll call will be required. Uh, Resolution 23-453, resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of municipality pursuant to NJSA 48, 48, 4-87, chapter 159, public laws 1948, United States Department of Justice and Department of Law and Public Safety, summer expansion, $19,093.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution 23-454, resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of municipality pursuant to NJSA 40, is that 404? I'm sorry, 48, 48, 487, same, chapter 159, public laws 1948, State of New Jersey Department of Health amended COVID-19 supplemental funding grant, $20,000.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution 23-455, resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of municipality pursuant to NJSA 40, 404, I said, here, 44, 4:4-87, chapter 159, public laws 1948, State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Mercer County, reentry, $150,000.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution 23-456, resolution providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue in the budget of municipality pursuant to NJSA 404:84-87, chapter 159, public law 1948, national opioid settlements, $1,2,122.16.
Questions?
Council President?
Council, I will make the calls.
Thank you very much. So my question has to do with, since this money is going to be going into this current year's budget, do we already have a plan for having this go to mental health, particularly outreach in our neighborhoods, and exactly how this $1 million plus is going to be used?
Council President, may I?
Yes.
Bless Mr. Cruz. Um, the, the monies that we receive as part of this action are basically designated as part of when we get it. I think Mr. Cruz may have some more specifics with respect to how it's being earmarked, but these funds are designated and we're agreeing to use them for certain programs as we receive them. Um, if you're, if you're interested in specific programs, this administrator Cruz may be able to speak to the specificity in terms of where they're going.
Thank you.
Madam President, Adam Cruz is administrator. Um, I don't have the specific programming, but we have three departments that actually can use the funding. That would be the Department of Health, Department of Recreation, and the Police Department. So we're going to make a determination within the coming days, hopefully, to see how we can divvy up the money among the departments, um, to start using it in here.
And, and Council President, Councilwoman Williams, mental health is one of the components that's earmarked in those funds.
Thank you. I just wanted to see if we might even by Thursday have just a very rough idea of how this money will go towards Health Department, but how Health Department will use it, and just what the plan is in a bigger term for mental health. Because I did have some discussions, and at least another one of my colleagues did, with Director Richardson.
Happy to do that candidly. I should have provided that, my motion designating that the funds can be used to counsel. I will supplement that, this submission to counsel, so you can read that and understand and appreciate where these monies are earmarked for.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Any questions? Consent?
Resolution 23-457, resolution approving a dissent to assignment of a certain lease agreement dated April 6, 2017, by and between the city of Trenton and Marine Terminal, Urban Renewal Associates, and an addendum thereto.
Questions? Consent?
Resolution 23-465, resolution from the city of Trenton supporting the application of OAHs Brunswick Village LLC for Aspire funding from the state of New Jersey Economic Development Authority for the rehabilitation of a 110 unit before 4000 development.
Questions?
Um, Madam President?
Madam Vice President?
I think I, it's 465.
465.
465.
Oh, okay.
Madam President? Councilwoman Figueroa-Kettenberg?
And just to back up, I'm so, so sorry, to 457, just throughout this, the memorandum and document, instead of, the LLC is listed as 45 members and LLC, rather than 1545, which is the actual address, is that a typo, or is that accurate? Just curious, because it's throughout the document. Hello? Did I get my question? Oh, okay.
Chief, Chief of Staff, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, what, what is your question?
No, throughout the memo and the documents that we have, so we know that the address of the actual, the, the property is 1545 members and group. And I'm just curious, because the LLC is called 45 members and LLC, and I'm just curious, is that a typo? Could we miss out on 15, or is that accurate? That's all, just for legal verification. For instance, in the first page of the memo, for a second, third, fourth paragraph down, it says 45 members and LLC proposes, um, so just, but the actual address is 1545, so I'm just curious, because that's a typo opening through.
I'm going back to the original lease dated April 6, 2017, and on that, the less see is, yes, as you say, identified as 45 members.
Yeah.
That must have carried that through.
Make sure that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, please. Counselwoman.
Thank you. Regarding, uh, 23, 465, I'd like to request that that dis, developer come back to us since we gave them a pilot earlier this year, as this property lies in the north ward, and I have a number of constituents who would like to see an update on the progress of this renovation, because originally, I believe, it was due to start in January, and some of these folks are city employees who've reached out to me directly on this. So I think if we could in November or December, invite this developer to come back to council to give us an update. to give us an update publicly on this project.
I will contact them and ensure they're here.
Thank you, Mr. Beach.
Madam President.
Madam Vice President.
Can we rule call this one?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, which one are we rule call?
Court question.
Yes. Uh, yes.
Resolution 23-466. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Resolution 23-466, resolution authorizing the plan aboard the City of Trenton to hear a review of proposed new land development ordinance pursuant to NJSA 4055D1 et cetera.
Questions?
Madam President. I think this is applicable to this. The other evening, Counselwoman Williams and I had a conversation with a constituent who was talking about the cemetery over by the train station and getting that designated as an urban park. In speaking to... I can't remember who I was talking to about it. But they were saying that that would go... Judy Mink, who we spoke to, but someone here, I can't remember. They were saying that for that, that would have to go into the planning document. They're like, there's a current planning document that's in effect right now. Like, that's not something that could just be done, like to say, okay, we're going to just designate that. That's something that would have to be done through the planning and then this document and then the land developer. I just want to know, is that something that would go under this? Isn't it would not, Michael? Okay, so there we go. All right, thank you. That was the question. I just wanted to make sure before we did it, if it was still time with this to flush that in consideration. Okay, thank you.
Rule call.
Noted. Resolution 23-469, resolution designated NGAG Developers LLC as redeeveler of certain properties commonly known as 107, 109, 111, 115, 117 Walnut Avenue and 779 East State Street, located within Central Eastern, East State Street redevelopment areas and approving the purchase and sale and redevelopment agreement for said properties and authorizing the execution of said agreement.
Questions? Consent.
Can we rule call this one?
469?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Noted. Resolution 23... I'm sorry? Resolution 23-458, resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract to three-phase Excel elevator, doing business as TEC Elevator Inc., for elevator preventative maintenance materials, equipment repairs, and replacement repairs for the Department of Public Works Division of Public Property for a period of two years with an option to extend the contract for two years from date of awarding in amount not to exceed $137,880 at a yearly rate of $68,940. Bid 2023-45.
Questions?
Madam President.
Madam Vice President.
Thank you. I just wanted to note, like, I'm all for this. I think it's great repairing the elevators and everything. But because this is the water facilities, can someone give an update on what the status is about the elevator and the water utility that we approved, the money to modernize and approve the elevator? Somebody tell us what the status is.
Turn your mic on, push the button. There you go, thanks.
Good evening, Counsel President, Vice President, and Councilmembers. So parts has been a problem with elevators since COVID. It's been very hard. It's not that we haven't moved forward. But the good news is we have started the project at the 334 Courtland, started this week.
See for compliance and strategic planning liaison and management support and consulting services for the City of Trenton Department of Water and Sewer for a period of one year from date of awarding in amount not to exceed $100,000. RFP 2023-25.
Questions? Consent.
Resolution 23-462, resolution authorizing contract to Civil Solutions and Division of ARH Associates for the ESRI web-based GIS enterprise geodatabase management and development for the Department of Water and Sewer. Trenton Water Works awarded through New Jersey State Contract Number T-1841 in amount not to exceed $250,000.
Questions?
Madam President.
Madam Vice President.
If BA Cruz could just touch on this again for us. It said the State of New Jersey has awarded this contract from June 192019 to June 18, 2024. I know we wouldn't be discussing with something like pending another award by the state. BA Cruz, if you could just tell the body what the deal is with this.
I, yes. Madam President, if you'll allow me to speak to the clerk for one second. There's a discrepancy on the resolution and on the title, on the agenda. If you'll allow me a second.
Madam President, it appears we do have, this is a resolution that we put in front of you with an amended title. And that looks to be what Mr. Cruz is referring to here. Resolution 23-462, an updated version is provided for you at the dais. And to read that, I mean, I'm going to take yours to make sure I'm right here. Resolution authorizing contract to Civil Solutions and Division of ARH Associates for the ESRI web-based GIS geodatabase management and development for the Department of Water and Sewer. Trenton Water Works awarded through New Jersey State Contract Number T-1841 in amount not to exceed, yes, $149,955. And that is updated and in front of you. It is, they are identical. This is distributed to the dais. I know it came down like recently, but yes, it is.
So, Madam President, for the, I just wanted for the official record to reflect that the, your agenda actually has a different title. But the clerk already read onto the record what the title is actually, should be. And it's reflective as to what the Counselwoman President brought to our attention at doc review, which was a change in the award due to the state contract. The state contract as specified on the subject block on your agenda states that this contract will be in effect for almost three years when in fact, the state contract actually ends in June of 2024. And because the company is not going to have a state contract, we cannot proceed to award an additional contract based on this award. Now, in June of 2024, we may be coming, or May, June of 2024, May, we may be coming back to council to request then to extend if the company receives an extension of their contract by the state or a new contract award is made to this entity. But for what it is right now, the contract will expire on June of 2024. And so will this, the award will only go for one year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, consent.
Noted. Where, Resolution 23-463, resolution accepting a bid and awarding contract to Taylor Business Systems, doing business as Harris Local Government for printing and mailing service for regular final and corrected billing for Department of Water and Sewer. Water billing office for a period of two years from date of award with an option to extend the contract for two additional years in amount not to exceed $411,220. Bid 2023-5.
Question? Consent.
Resolution 23-464, resolution authorizing Director of Water and Sewer to sign State of New Jersey Waste Water Application Forms.
Questions? Consent.
Long to ordinances for first reading and introduction. Ordinance 23-60, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map at 316 North Clinton Avenue, Lot 1701, Lot 32 pursuant to NJSA 4812-13B5 to Carmen Montalvo for the sum of $3,000.
Questions?
That would be a rule call. Ordinance 23-61, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property identified on the city tax map as 81 Summer Street, Lot 4,3, Lot 41 pursuant to NJSA 4812-13B5 to Ed E. Kelly for the sum of $5,700.
Any questions? Okay.
Ordinance 23-62, ordinance authorizing City of Trenton to enter into a 10-year lease agreement for city-owned property commonly known as 27 Fell Street to the Trenton Professional Old Timers Association, a New Jersey nonprofit corporation pursuant to NJSA 4812-15 et cetera.
Questions?
Counsel President.
Counselwoman Williams.
Thank you. So I have a question as I know Fell Street well. It's in the North Ward, and this is a location that has not been used in a very long time. And it's very sizable. And other organizations have inquired about it to, for their uses of nonprofit. And I'm just curious as to how the Old Timers Association was selected and then also, as generous it is, and I know they do great work in our community, a lot of folks do great work in our community. Why the price of $1 was the price? Because to me, that seems, again, they do great work in our community, but that seems overly generous when we're a city that's grabbing for money in our couches, quite frankly. And I'd like to know more about this because that number, good deeds or not, just seems very, very low to me.
Madam President, can I piggyback off of Counselwoman Williams? And with that, where we have other nonprofits that have at least building in the city as well, they would, they pay at least $600 a month to lease their building and everything. And 10 years for $1, that's a long time when we're turning other people away that have businesses and things as well. The city, to Counselwoman Williams' point, we need money. So why isn't there a fee that's being charged for this? $5,000, $10,000, $600 a month? I think it should be fair across the board if we're going to enter into agreements like this. Right? And then especially when we have places like Passage Theater, who Counselwoman Williams and I are passionate about, right? As well as other people on the council, who are also looking for lease agreements, right? That have not been extended or anything like that. You know, they've been around a very long time and serve the community. So we just, you know, we're the fairness, like, where did all this come from? How did we come to this 10 years, $1? Some people paying a fee they don't have to. How did we get here? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Beach.
So the decision here was reached basically on a balancing of the interests. As Counselwoman Williams points out, this group does great things for the city.
Can't hear you.
This group does great things for the city, and the view was given that to be maybe overly generous in the view of some of the council persons here. That's, this body's call then as to whether or not, you know, they feel it's overly generous and, you know, we can either go back and revisit the amount of the rents. Balancing that against Passage Theater, I agree with Passage Theater does great things, but we've also given Passage Theater $100,000 in ARP funds. So it's not like they aren't getting some benefits from the city.
Thank you, Mr. Beach.
Madam President.
Madam Williams. That was, I'm sorry, Williams, listen.
You sound like me when I go down the list of my kids and I forgot too. They just call everybody's name to the family. Um, thank you. I have concerns about this property. I'm familiar with the area. This property sits on a dented end street. There is no parking over there. There's like a little turnoff to the right, right in front of the building. But I was trying to access other views, like a 360 view, to see if there's any parking in the rear. How would parking be mitigated so that the residents over there are not suffering from the influx of people going to that small, what used to be a senior community center?
That's quite obviously a consideration I would have to look into for you, Counselwoman.
Okay. And to Vice President Feliciano's point, there have been other people that have inquired about obtaining city-owned properties to lease. And they were told verbatim, right in front of my face, that the city is not a landlord, that they don't lease properties. But we're leasing properties. We literally have a lease sitting in front of us. But a local nonprofit who was awarded a grant was told here two weeks ago that that opportunity didn't even exist. So I'm wondering, to my colleague's point, what is the process of that? Is this not an open, fair type of process? Because it's concerning that we're just giving stuff away for free when other people make just as much of an impact in different lanes that needs opportunities for our people.
Madam President, if I may.
This was to...
I just wanted to clarify, we, the other nonprofit in question was looking for a turnkey solution, a building that the city would operate, that they could essentially lease space in. And the city doesn't have those facilities. We are in communication, I am in communication with that nonprofit to discuss with the Director of City Economic Development options for purchasing or long-term leasing properties that they would then need to develop and maintain like this opportunity. But just to be clear, the city doesn't, we don't have just commercial landlords. We don't maintain properties. We don't operate spaces that individuals can rent. But we do have properties that would love to have a facility develop and bring into a place where they can utilize. And for anyone who wants that opportunity, they can certainly come to see us really at any time. The city does have properties that can be sold, can be disposed of through long-term leases. Though, as I understand, that particular nonprofit is looking for only a one-year solution. So they're looking for something a little more...
Semperi.
Yeah, something that is a little more turnkey than something like this would be. But they can certainly, any individual or group that is interested in any way can certainly come and reach out to us.
Thank you for that. Because I certainly helpful as we see, as we're going to continue to see people come forward to us to ask to lease our other city-owned properties. So that's definitely helpful for the differentiation between them leasing a property as us being an active landlord, maintaining a property versus them acquiring a property and 100% being their responsibility. So that would be very helpful. I appreciate that. So I do want to concur with Counselwoman Williams on the fact that a dollar a year for 10 years is an extremely low amount. I know this is a nonprofit organization, but I know where a lot of fundraising methods and things like this that this nonprofit does. So there's something that they would be willing to help the city out with as we're trying to revenue some money so that we can provide more services for our community. That would be much appreciated if it comes to some sort of agreement with this nonprofit and others in the future as well. Because the ones that have already solicited us for support have also offered monetary exchangement for leasing the property. They are not offering it for free. So we just want to make sure everyone is being held to that same standard if they can afford it. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Madam President.
Madam Counsel Kettinberg.
I just have a question. The last... The last whereas on the first page of this ordinance states that whereas the TPOT has designated Hector Way, having addressed 13 rows of Russell Avenue, Trenton, Jersey, as the person responsible for ensuring compliance with the terms and conditions of the lease, how is Mr. Way the one who has been designated? And is there some type of conflict being that he's also a city employee? Can somebody please explain that?
I mean, Mr. Way is a city employee. He's an officer of this Old Timers Association, so that's why he's on there as a representative. Does it create a direct conflict of interest? No, but it's, you know, it's up to you to decide whether or not that you think it's a problem.
Being given his position in public works and, you know, having his name on this and then us talking about how is this organization getting this lease for $1 a year? Yes, it does put it into question. Absolutely.
Council President. Councilwoman Williams. Thank you, ma'am. I just would like actually just to make the suggestion and humble request that the city withdraw this resolution and request until possibly a different purchase price could be worked out and also more information about how the property would be utilized. It would be nice to see the property come back to life, certainly, but I think, you know, there's more work to be done here. Thank you.
The administration will be open to that.
Okay. So are we going to say this is the whole by the administration?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President.
Very well. And if I may, just for, for clarification, I think what the discussion was, was to revise this to include not necessarily individual, but either title or her representative, just from an optics standpoint. Good. On your call, Madam President.
Let's proceed, please.
Certainly. Madam President, if you want to ask for motion to approve Resolution 23-448 authorizing City Council of City of Trenton to hold executive session, which is split in public.
May I have a motion? Have a second. Thank you.
It's been moved in second. I'll call a roll, Council members.
Yes.
Councilwoman Feliciano.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Cadiz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Council President Frisberg.
Yes.
Thank you. And I'll leave this to the listener if he wants, if he'd like to do public comment now or if he still needs to handle executive session. You know, I might as well take the needle down if it's Council President's will, we can address public comment now. Certainly. If I can have the public comment.
You have a walk-on, I'm sorry.
The board, Tony.
Is there a walk, the walk-on resolution?
Oh, you know what? I understand. Yes, we do. We do have a walk-on, I'm sorry, Councilwoman President. And that is the... And that is a resolution condemning the attack by Hamas on the people of Israel?
Correct.
And would that be for roll call consent? Or would you like me to read that into the record on Thursday? What would you like me to read?
Read it to record first and...
Certainly. Whereas on October 7, 2023, the militant group Hamas launched an attack on Israeli towns firing thousands of rockets before breaking through a heavily fortified border fence and sending its members deep into Israeli territory. And whereas upon entry into the country, Hamas gunmen killed more than 1,300 people, including civilians and soldiers who took up to 150 hostages, including at least 27 Americans. And whereas set attacks included unspeakable atrocities, including the murder and beheading of children and infants, and has resulted in a military conflict which remains ongoing and will likely cost thousands of additional lives. Now therefore be a resolved by the City Council of the City of Trenton that it hereby condemns the enforced set attacks and human rights violations being perpetrated by the Hamas militant group and be it further resolved that all necessary, that all necessary action must be taken to bring this matter to an immediate end and avoid further unnecessary loss of life. And it is further resolved that this resolution shall take effect pursuant to law.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. I'd like to have that roll call, please.
Certainly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on to public comment. Our first individual public comment is Charles Brown. Is Mr. Brown here? Moving on to, help me out here, Jerry Lamont? Lamont, thank you. Certainly. And that brings me to a very good point. So as you know, you have five minutes for public comment. You may address any matters that you wish, but please understand this is not a Q and A session. The council is not obliged to respond to you. Please state your name, yes, please state your name and address for the record. And you're going to want to hit the button that's on that microphone. There you are. You're all set.
Jerry Lamont, 80 Manor Boulevard in Hamilton Township. You may be wondering why someone from Hamilton Township is here at the Trenton Council meeting? I have a very good reason. I have a cousin who was a Trenton resident who unfortunately committed suicide on February 9th and his dogs ended up at the dog shelter, animal shelter. If not for the volunteers, I don't know where his dogs would have ended up. They did end up in very good homes, but like I said, if it wasn't for the volunteers, I don't know where those dogs would have ended up and if they would still be alive. So my question is, you don't have to answer, I'm just going to pose a general question. I'm curious how many volunteers have participated in taking dogs to adoption events that have been harmed? Because I'm pretty sure that it's not that many, if there's any at all. The just walking them is not going to get them adopted. And I'm speaking from a personal experience in my heart. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Abel James.
Abel James.
Good evening. My name is Abel James. I live at 47 Park Lake Avenue. I have been a volunteer at the Trenton Shelter for over a year, although I've been banned twice in that time. I just want to read the handbook that I was asked to sign when I started as a volunteer, volunteer duty.
Excuse me, before you go on, you said you're at 47 Park Lake Avenue.
Yes.
What city?
Oh, I'm sorry, tie this still.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Volunteer duties: Cleaning the animals' cages and/or kennels. Spot cleaning the cages and/or kennels. Working at special events and fundraisers. Walking, socializing, bathing and grooming the animals. Assisting prospective adopters with information on animals ready for adoption. Assisting with records and documentation. Greeting and interacting with all visitors to the shelter. Working at the front desk. Attending training classes. Work with the animals. Log daily observations in animal sheets. Answer shelter phones, take messages, direct the public in appropriate manner. That was the handbook that I was signed and the duties that I was told to do. Then also it says disciplinary procedures. Those volunteers who commit minor violations of policies and procedures will be verbally counseled in an effort to achieve an acceptable behavior. I was never once verbally counseled. I never received any written documentation that I was violating any policies or procedures. For four months after I got suspended the second time, I tried to contact Maria Richardson with emails, phone calls. Her assistant was getting tired of hearing from me, but every time I talked to the assistant, she told me, "She'll call you back today." Not one phone call returned. Four months and I still don't know why I got suspended. And now I got a letter from the attorney, Wesley, that I was suspended because my duties, my acts violated the rules and the regulations and I have never been notified of anything of that concern. And actually, the first letter that they sent me why I was banned said that because I was harassing an organization and I have never seen any proof or anything from them. So that's defamation of my character to say I was harassing somebody when I was not harassing anyone. So I really want to know when I'm going to get an answer, when the other volunteer, when the other volunteers are going to get answers of why we have been banned and suspended from the shelter when all we have done is worked our hardest to get those animals adopted. If you want to look at numbers, look at how many of those animals that have been adopted were from the help of the volunteers that you have just banned from the shelter. And then you're going to seize a big surprise because it's going to, you think the numbers are bad now, we're finally starting to flatten the curve because we were starting to do adoption events every Saturday and Sunday. It took us almost a year to get approval to do that. And we put our time, we're not only going every week to walk the dogs and socialize the dogs and make them more adoptable, we also took our weekend times to go to adoption events, organized them ourselves and attended them. Not one dog ever bit anybody when we were at those events. There was never any problem. Every place we went, they loved us there, they welcomed us back. And now you're, you're allowing Maria Richardson to take away one of the most effective ways to get those dogs out of that shelter. So I really hope that this is a wake-up call and you realize what's going on and someone will give us some answers as to why we are being treated the way we do. And we are giving you our free service. Your concern about finances, we are the most effective at getting those dogs out and we don't charge you anything. We want those animals out, we're passionate about it. And I'm just, I, I've been quiet, I've been, I've been calm and I'm outraged now, I really am. I, I really have nothing else to say, but I hope that you'll listen to what we're trying to say and realize that, and a lot of the volunteers, she said that nine were banned, more than nine were banned, and the 13 that are left, a lot of them aren't going back because of the way that we were treated. That is the discussion.
Thank you. That's your time. Thank you very much.
James, can I just see that handbook while you're sitting in there?
I just...
Steve Clay.
Good evening, Steve Clay, Wolfpack, from Hamilton Township. There's obviously a lot to unpack here about the animal shelter tonight, but I, I think, given the pertinence of the termination of all these volunteers, myself being one of them, that's the one I'm going to address. I've been going into Trenton Shelter for about seven years now, six years, excuse me. Not as a volunteer, just to drop off donations, take some pictures, meet the animals. Last year, my girlfriend, we escorted there. She goes to take pictures to get the intake info, information of the animals, to put them on the lost and found pages that she runs because the shelter was not able to do that. I needed to go escort her because she always met a lot of antagonistic resistance of being there to take pictures. Not always, I, I will correct myself, not always. There are some specific employees, some have gone, some will come back. We weren't actually volunteers until earlier this year we went and there was one ACO on duty. It just got in there late because he was on a call and he was slammed because there was nobody else there. In order to help him clean up all the shitty crates and everything else, we needed to fill out these volunteer forms for the waivers and the old harmless goods. That's the only reason I was a volunteer. My volunteer hours are primarily spent in hand. So having not been there for three weeks, I received the same email these other volunteers did accusing me of some behavior, unknown behavior. There's no answer. We got a follow-up email from the law department saying that we would be contacted individually after the investigation. From the dictionary, investigating. Carry out a systematic or formal inquiry to discover and examine the facts of an incident or allegation so as to establish the truth. That didn't happen. What we got was a third letter just basically dismissing us again, which is ironic considering the first letter claimed we were being dismissed to protect the integrity of the shelter operations. This just further clarifies there aren't any. We go there to take pictures and get them, get these dogs advertised. And I'm going to have to respectfully decline the suggestion that we stop doing that because we go there as members of the public. And per state law, the shelter is open to the public so that persons can see and view the intake logs of all its animals. And the hallmark of every poorly run shelter in this country are the shelters who ban volunteers who try to hide what they're doing from the public and refuse to allow them to take pictures. We don't go there and antagonize anybody. I have a very well-working relationship with the shelter manager and have for years. But at this point, I can open this to statements, we've all been accused of something and dismissed for it and we have yet to hear what that actual accusation is. And I tell you myself personally, what an actual investigation would probably determine is that you have some specific employees there who have created that hostile work environment amongst themselves, with or without volunteers. And sometimes they antagonize us. I've never brought any complaints because that's something I'm there for. It's a high-stress environment for employees, volunteers, the animals. But if you're going to accuse me, tell me what it is. Say it to me. I will continue to go there. As a member of the public, I will continue to take pictures. I will view those intake logs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Juliana Marazo.
I live at 1012 Washington Avenue in Newtown, Pennsylvania. I just came to say, I think there's multiple things. We were banned because of conduct, but conduct has never been an issue when it comes to staff members. For instance, I was threatened by a staff member. I reported it to the shelter manager that Maria Richardson and absolutely nothing was done. Also Alexa Derlech? I might be saying her name wrong. It was on camera. I had the exact time he said it. I know why he said it. I had reported something to the shelter manager and I know that the shelter manager told his staff because I came back and a room was blocked off from volunteers because staff was in there texting and sitting during their shift as all of us volunteers are walking dogs and doing everything. I strongly recommend, you go in there undercover, send somebody in there undercover and you will see what us volunteers see. We speak out and then we're banned for speaking out, but we're speaking out because the things that are happening there. I mean, a dog was slammed right before his death. Yam. There's a vet tech who witnessed it. The detective, investigator showed up to the shelter, nothing happened of it. I told Officer Munoz numerous times who the witness was who saw the dog slammed before he was euthanized and nothing was done of it. So we were told when we were volunteering to report things. We were told, let us know so this can change. That is what we did. We always notified Alexis, we always notified Maria Richardson. That's what we were told to do. I have countless emails, all ignored, nothing happened. I hadn't gone to the shelter for months because I was threatened by a grown man and I was uncomfortable going to the shelter. So I just went back the week prior to the ban. So how am I making it a hostile work environment when I'm not even there? I'm doing things off-site. I'm a part of Arcadia Animal Rescue and all of us are now and we have pulled seven dogs in just the past four weeks. Like, I don't think it's realized how much of an impact this is going to make. We have another dog being pulled. I tried to contact the shelter and I'm literally being ignored because I'm Juliana Marazo and I was a banned volunteer, but I'm a case manager for a rescue. You can't ignore me when I'm pulling dogs from your overcrowded shelter and that is how they're treating me and other people. I've had to have the rescue director reach out to them to be ignored and to have to follow up just to get them to do their job. For instance, today I called, no answer. I know they know my number at this point and there's probably caller ID. I called back five... I called back five minutes later on a blocked number, star six seven, I get an answer. Why is that? Why is that? And you know what I was recording? A dog that I'm being told is going to be dumped in Trenton, New Jersey today because the lady doesn't want her. Yeah. So, I really hope all of this is considered as this is not something small, this, we're not, we're not making it a hostile work environment. The employees and the staff are not doing their job and don't like that we're speaking up. Because we care about the animals, they're doing their job and that's their job and they just want to make money. This is our passion. That's it.
Thank you. Your time to be on.
Thank you.
Is that Daphne? Fella, thank you.
Daphne Ruiz, 38, Lain Road, Lawrenceville, New Jersey. Our society is structured on how it treats its other children and animals, the most defenseless, weakest, and most vulnerable. I hope Trenton is treating its safer citizens and children better than the shelter has been treating the dogs in their care, which is abysmal. The director of the shelter ignores emails and phone calls from concerned citizens about shelterlessness management. This lack of response and care is filtered down to the shelter manager. banning the volunteers was clearly a witch hunt. The kids, what's occurring or not occurring at the shelter, they don't want weaknesses. It's a common tactic used by shelter personnel and the management, it's used at Philly Act as well. The letters received by the volunteers are retaliation for them having parents to speak up regarding the lack of emotional, physical, and medical care. These poor dogs are getting what they didn't expect from shelter staff. The mayor is complicit to give him silence, and what kind of investigation is conducted by only speaking to one side? First, these dogs suffer at the hands of accusers who starve and neglect them, tossing them aside like garbage, and then they go to a system where they are neglected by the same people who are being paid to care for them. They don't get marketed the way they should, don't get proper exercise, they receive little stimulation such as consomme with peanut butter to help pass the time now that the volunteers are gone. The trainer who is assessing, socializing, and getting familiar personalities to help give them a fighting chance to get adopted and not be killed was told not to return because his contract was put on hold. Isn't it time to shine a spotlight on the shelter and clean house, starting at the top? Isn't it time to get competent care in the state of the shelter who are trained to take care of the dogs and who actually want to be there and do their best to find loving homes for the dogs? Isn't it time to go to new shelter with the money that was set aside for the purpose? Isn't it time for the state to come in and go through all the records and see the conditions in which the dogs play? Isn't it time for the state to take over this shelter? Please help us get the brave people running this shelter because clearly what's going on now is a disgrace, an embarrassment, and a death sentence for these dogs since this is quickly turning into the high-cost shelter it once was. And by the way, I'm not a volunteer, I'm just a concerned citizen and have been following what's going on for quite a while. Thank you.
Madam President, let us all have a public comment. If you want to move to city comment.
And you want to leave the comment and you want to move to executive session? Executive? You have two.
I just have one announcement I'd like to make.
Let's go to city comment. Councilwoman Williams.
I just have two announcements. The first one being that tomorrow night will be the second, the CPAC meeting. We had a first one last month and had two good attendance for the first one. And I'd like to thank the police director and his community relations team for being there with us, as well as Mr. Perry Shaw with the street teams. And our meeting will be tomorrow night, 5:30, in the basement hall at Galley Baptist Church at 440 Martin Luther King Boulevard. So please come, we'd love to see more people. And also, this is an important meeting that actually is occurring at the same time as our meeting on Thursday night. There'll be a meeting about the Antico Square Skate Park Design Review, and that's going to be Thursday night at 6:00 PM, located at the New Rec Center, Ryce Center at 454 North Plain Avenue here in Trenton. So if you can come to council or if you live in an area and have a trauma interested in Antico Square and the skate park, that's going to be happening eventually. Please do attend that meeting because community input is going to be integral to getting this right. Thank you very much.
Are we going to council members? Council members?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I really do appreciate the passion that we have here tonight regarding the animals and other issues, and I hope that, you know, with the collaboration of the city council as being the board of health and with the director of health and recreation that we could come to a resolution for this as quickly as possible. And I hope that, you know, I know some of you, a lot of you were not here tonight with Director Richardson was addressing the public with her comments and the updates of the shelter. But I would implore you to listen to Mr. Ray Inhoom's video once it's posted in the very near future so that you can get a recap on what was said here tonight, so you can have a better understanding of what the shelter is going through, what the city is facing, and understand that we, like, our hands are tied with this. We have to do what we have to do to operate as a government as efficient as possible, and sometimes that comes with very difficult decisions that we don't want to make. And with that, I sympathize with all of you, with the animals, and I really hope that this becomes a better process in the very near future. And that's all I genuinely want to say tonight. So thank you all for coming and have a good evening.
Councilwoman Felicity Allen.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, sticking around. We appreciate you being here, and again, for your passion and your thoughtfulness. Those that are here, the animal advocates, we thank you for that. Certainly, it's disturbing everything that's going on, right? And then we're sitting in the seats and we're trying to figure out how to best serve the people, how best to serve the animals, how best to make the right decisions for the city overall, right? Clearly, this animal shelter, it's going to be an issue until we can resolve the issue. But just know that we are, as a council, doing our due diligence and asking and listening, and your words are not falling on deaf ears, right? I've listened and heard you tonight. And the other times when you have spoken, we're asking, we're asking, we're asking. Certainly, something does need to be done. It would be wonderful if we could have a collaborative effort between the volunteers, a collaborative and respectful agreement or relationship between the volunteers and the staff. At no time should any staff be disrespecting any volunteers in any capacity, nor should they be disrespecting animals who are under their care. If they don't like animals, they shouldn't work there. That's just where we are. To hear that an animal was slammed right before being euthanized, that's disgusting. It should be not tolerated. I'm not sure what right-up offenses would go into play with that, but certainly, to be abusive in the capacity, I'm sure is not what the job requires nor entails. So things like that should not be happening at all. To the flip side of that, if volunteers, if any volunteer would come in and be verbally abusive or try to overstep boundaries and instruct us if they are there to dictate or direct the workers, that too is not right, right? And people should, no one should curse at anyone, no one should berate anyone, no one should talk down to anyone on either side. It should be a common goal, and that should be to help these animals, to get them placed, right? And to make the best decisions to help the shelter run overall. And so for the advice that has been sent in from time to time, actually quite often, thank you. I could say for me, it's a lot, right? It's a lot. But that just goes to show your love for the animals and everything, and again, I appreciate that with you. And just know that we're looking to try to figure it out. The bottom line to it is this, regardless of a new shelter or not, it's not a pet hotel, right? Things are, it's not going to be a place where the animals can be kept, and that's the sad part, but that's the reality of the situation. So we do need to crack down and have people in place to do their job that they're paid to do, to go out and to crack down on these breeders, these people that are abusing these animals, people need to pick up the phone, people need to go out and they need to do their job, or they just need to go. And proper assessments need to be made by management to do proper evaluations of staff, and to be honest, it's not a friend thing, it's not a, it is work. There's business and there's personal. I could like you all day, but if you're not doing your job, you have to take the consequences for your actions, and that is where that is. And so, I believe the city overall with how they do, you know, professional development reviews and things of that, at one time, they were going quite often and then it kind of fell off to the wayside. It needs to pick back up, and that's city-wide. Everyone should be held accountable for their actions. You can pay check, you can do a job, do it with excellence or just go ahead. Again, we're working towards some kind of resolve with that. I'm hopeful and pray for that something will come to fruition sooner rather than later. But I do thank you for your efforts and for your care with the animals and the situation. This Saturday, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, it's going to be the start of a mental health community conversation that I myself am spearheading along with Assemblyman Anthony Varelli, Commissioner Nina Melker, and Acting Health and Human Services Director Maria Richardson. We are going to be at Cowery Christian Fellowship Ministries out in Ewing Township, we're starting there, 611 Parkway Avenue, where we're going to be viewing the documentary, I've Been Shot, hosted by us, but then followed by a panel of speakers as it deals with mental health trauma and how we can move forward to create reasonable, realistic, sustainable solutions to moving forward, right? And then after that, we're having another one on the 28th, we're bouncing around, and then we're doing another one November 9th, December 9th, we'll have more information forthcoming on that. Encouraging people to break the stigma towards mental health and to break the silence and begin to talk about the things that you may be going through or experiencing, right? Even working in the shelter, it could be traumatic. Volunteering at the shelter could be traumatic. People need to talk about things within reason, get our feelings and everything in check. And we need to know that it's okay to not be okay, but it's not okay to not say anything about it. With that being said, I thank you all for coming out and bid you safe, Trenton, what's going on. Thank you.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Genther.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, everybody, on behalf of the Trenton Animal Shelter who came out to speak to provide your experiences being a volunteer at the Trenton Animal Shelter and working so diligently. I think you're, any one of you that actually lives in this, the Trenton, but actually working so diligently to try to provide for our misfortunate animals that, you know, a lot of times our own residents dump or mistreated or, you know, what have you, you know the story. I was not satisfied with, you know, the presentation versus comments from volunteers this evening, and therefore, I will say that I will still work diligently to try to find answers and solutions. Clearly, your duties per your handbook, and I'm going to make sure my council colleagues have a copy of this handbook, clearly your duties are not only to walk the animals, it is much greater than that. You know, and there's concerns on both sides of the fence, right? Nobody wants somebody breathing down their neck or telling them how to do their job at the same time. You know, you guys come in there with an open heart, seemingly, to do the best for animals and make sure that they get homes, and that is the end result, that's the common goal, correct? So, you know, having said that, you know, I do want to delve into this more, I do want to have more of an open table discussion, and I'm going to work towards trying to figure out how we do that. I would have liked, you know, Director Richardson and Mr. Munoz to have been in the room while you guys were giving your testimony tonight, so maybe offer out, you know, private conversations with what's going on, because at the end of the day, I'm here to try to make sure what's being done is what's right. You know, I'm here as a voice for people, and I just want to make sure that, one, our animals are taken care of, but also, nobody's being shunned at the door for trying to help. We need all the help we can get, quite frankly, here in the city. But not only with the animal issue, there are a ton of other issues, as we all know, but this is a big issue right now. And as my council colleague stated, you know, just getting $24 million into a new shelter is not going to solve our woes. You know, we still have animals being dumped, and hopefully down the road with the adoption of the breeding ordinance, you know, we can decrease the number of animals that we have that we need, that are in this predicament, and, you know, that time will tell, that's not going to happen overnight. So with that, I just want to thank you all from the body of your heart for what you've done, you know, and like I said, to be in the shelters and volunteer and maybe overstep, that can be frustrating for staff, but again, slamming an animal, whether they're being euthanized or not, that's wholly unacceptable. You know, much of you, much of the volunteers that come to speak, much of you have the same testimony, say some of the same things, and that needs to be taken into account and, you know, figured out. So, I'm diligently still working, I hope that my colleagues will be on board with, you know, moving forward and trying to find more answers and more solutions for our animals because that is a key priority for me. So thank you guys again for taking time out of your schedules, out of your day, coming to Trenton, you know, to volunteer your time and to speak on what happened, not just giving up. So I thank you guys for that. I'm not saying thank you guys for being reinstated as volunteers, but you're being heard, so, you know, we're working towards that. Outside of that, I just want to say that being on the board of Kinder Smile, we do have a gala this Saturday from 5:00 to 9:30. If you're interested in going and you want to make a contribution to Kinder Smile, which basically provides funding to families in need for dental services and education opportunities, just please let me know and I'll see if I can, you know, get additional tickets for anybody, but it will be held in Hamilton at 1 Johnston Road. So just let me know, but have a good evening and thank you all for coming out.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for being present. Thank you to our presenters and our directors. I'm going to be very quick. Thank you to all of the Trenton animal volunteers who have come here and expressed your concerns. We are definitely listening. And thank you for your, you know, for volunteering your time with our animal shelter. Hopefully, we come up with a resolution to help that challenge that we're facing with the animal shelter. I just wanted to quickly mention that tomorrow at 6:00 PM, the Trenton Southmore Neighborhood Association will be meeting for our regular community conversation at the Boys and Girls Club on Center Street. If you are free, please come on by or spread the word. I also wanted just to say thank you to our Trenton street teams who are doing phenomenal work, walking the beat today and I'm speaking to the residents, I had the opportunity to attend with them, and it was very impactful, so I just want to shout them out, say thank you. Also, congratulations and kudos to everyone who celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month through several celebrations, events, and everything that happened throughout the month. So I'm proud to see all of the movement in that area. And also, just to be on the lookout, I will be hosting Conversations and Solutions with Councilwoman Gonzalez throughout the city beginning in January, and that will be a monthly event, and I hope to see you all there, dance will be coming up soon. So I just want to say thank you all for being here this evening.
Councilwoman Harris.
Well, first of all, I'd like to recognize we're in the ribbon for Breast Cancer Month. We all know somebody that's been affected by it, so it's good to see that we're all in society, you know, standing together with this. Regarding the shelter, I'm glad that the volunteers are getting their message out, how they feel. Glad to see that the director came tonight and spoke. I think, I'm pretty sure she said within 90 days, we should be having those trailers up and running. Hopefully, we're going to be having a location for the animal shelter. But yeah, there's a lot of things going on here with this shelter that regarding volunteers, and if we're here with the staff, and hoping there's going to be more, we can hear more information about what's going on with that. Also, I wanted to talk about, it was a wonderful event that I think some of my colleagues appeared with. mayor of Chicago and how he always had a smile on his face, and no matter what came his way, he was moving forward. And that's the mindset that I think this city of Trenton and this council seems to wanna have. We gotta continually move forward and do what we have to do to get this city going in the right direction. So, thank you all, and have a blessed evening.
Councilwoman Williams.
I already went, thank you, bud. I appreciate it, Doug, because I don't.
Councilwoman Frisbee. So, we went from over here, over here. Is that over?
Yes, that's, you know, our exercise. So, I wanted to say, one, I wanna remind everybody that this is also, like we said, most cancer awareness, the best prevention is getting tested. We remind you to get out and get tested. Please remember, men, men also get breast cancer. So, please, men, get tested as well. There is a plethora of information downstairs in the atrium. When you come in, there are also these pins as well. Just remind, as my colleague just said, breast cancer affects everyone, whether it's breast cancer or some other type of cancer, it affects everyone, so please, sir, please, madam, please do get tested. There was another one I wanted to mention. I don't have it, but I wanted to address also all the volunteers that came out this evening. One, I wanna say thank you. Well, before I should start there, I wanna thank Director Richardson for coming out. I'm glad that she's in good health again, that she was able to come out again, so, and I also now wanna address all of our volunteers. One, I wanna thank you for your desire to even come out and be with our animals and also director, our health director. Don't wanna neglect you. Thank you also for your awesome presentation. Anna, would you turn on that light? It's really driving me nuts every person that you, on the monitor. But thanks to our volunteers who come out and do the work. I can't speak to what has been addressed with the director's department. Just know that what you have done for those animals, they have all benefited from. We want to have rules and regulations in place so that it benefits everyone, so that what applies to one person applies to everyone. We want respect to go across the board, be with our volunteers. We want our volunteers to feel respected and feel protected, and we also want our team, our employees here to also feel respected and protected as well. We are obligated to this city and to this city first. We have been put in these seats to be fiscally responsible. That is what we were elected to do, to be responsible with the finances that come across our desk. And right now, getting the numbers that we have gotten and knowing that we are spending $900,000 that we don't have to spend, that's a really big number, and we know that our community is suffering. The animals are suffering, and I sympathize with all of them, but we cannot do one for the other, and that's why I hope that we do work out something so that it's amenable to everyone, so that everybody actually gets to have what it is that they want. But again, I'm going to say it, and I have my first responsibility is to our community. I hope that we can work something out. We appreciate all of you who have come into Trenton from Titusville to Hamilton to Warrens, Ewing, wherever you may be coming and leaving your homes and coming into our beautiful city. We appreciate you coming out, and we will continue to do the work. We are moving to get things in place so that everything is in decency and in order. With that said, I'm going to read the City of Trenton's mission statement, which is recognizing that the people of Trenton have made us the guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I thank everyone for coming out. I thank all of our directors for being here, our law department, and our community leaders partners, and of course, Ray Ewing, who's always on that camera. Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Carl Garcia.
Madam President, if you wanna ask for a motion to move for executive session?
Have a motion, please.
Go move second.
Let's move to the second. All over, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa-Gedder.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Motion, Carrie.